So I guess we're both out, so.
This time, okay. All right, we're going to begin the meeting this evening of the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Conyers Rockdale Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is an invocation. Let's bow our heads, let us pray. Please fill us with grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect us and all those around us. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be termination of a quorum. Call your name if you're here, please say aye. I know Leslie Lambert is not with us tonight. Tamika White.
Here.
Tom Harrison.
Here.
Ernest D. Stovall Goolsby.
Here.
And Al Ford is not with us tonight. All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as they were given to us this week.
For the June two thousand and twenty-three meeting, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is the rules of procedure for public hearing.
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning patient and fill out a public comment card to register their intention to speak prior to the start of the speech. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the planning commission the order is changed. A member of the city or county planning staff will present each item of the Conyers Rockdale Planning Commission and will further provide a recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have ten minutes in which to make his appropriate presentation. Any portion of their ten minutes may be reserved or revoked following the oppositions of the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will be deferred. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of ten minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of ten minutes. Once the public hearing portion explodes, no other speaker will be deferred. As a reminder, speakers are to address the planning commission, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in a procreation manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the planning commission may elect to hold your vote especially. The planning commission will vote upon a recommendation that will continue forward to the City of Conyers, City Council, or the Rockville County Board of Commissioners double key.
Thank you. Old business none, new business, City of Conyers none. Rockdale County, item R. One, two thousand four hundredth Southwest Tucker Mill Road. Special use plan case number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one. This is a request for special use permit to allow for the installation of two hundred feet above ground level monopole communication tower and related telecommunications facilities located on two thousand four hundredth Southwest Tucker Mill Road, parcel number zero three zero 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 one zero zero three one. The size is seventeen point four one acres. The applicant is Law Office of Mantenaya S. John, PA.
Given planning commissioners, again, the applicant is seeking a special use permit for the construction of a two hundred foot above-ground monopole. The applicant is not here. Staff did receive a request to have the item deferred to the next planning commission. However, as you all know, that the planning commission only has certain limited options when hearing planning cases. Your options again are to approve, approve at a lesser intent, deny, or provide a no recommendation. It is with staff's support that you guys present, give a no recommendation for this application, so it can move forward to the BOC and then have the BOC send it right back to the planning commission for a full, full hearing and so forth. Since we do actually legally advertise this application to have a hearing and we do have people to sign, is again with staff's recommendation that we actually have the actual public hearing and then be able to move forward and get you guys' decision after the public hearing has been concluded.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anybody signed up in support?
No, sir.
The applicant is not here.
Nope.
Okay, so now we'll hear to those who were signed up to oppose. And how many people do we have here?
We have five people signed up.
All right, be advised, you have a total of ten minutes, so gauge your time accordingly. And who signed up first?
We have Ms. Lisa, two ten North Decatur Road.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to that person. Ms. Brandy New.
I've never done nothing like this in my life. My name is Brandy New and I live at two four five six Tucker Mill Road, which is just a couple of houses down from the, the property that they're discussing. We, we live there personally because it's still country, but yet in the city. And when you go to put the tower in and construction, you're going to tear up part of what makes Tucker Mill special, at least to me and my family, and I believe my neighbors as well. And also today I had come across an ordinance through Rockdale County that had said that, that Rockdale County itself didn't really want to see any more towers put up, that it was hazardous to our health, it doesn't look good to the community, it tends to devalue the homes in the area. So based on those things, I mean, we'd like for y'all to, I guess, try to not let it happen or however, whatever needs to be done. I mean, a big thing probably there is the, the health and safety of the older people that still live there because there's going to be people that are not going to come and, you know, present their opinion on it because they are in fact older. And that's the last thing they need is something to add to their health issues. And there's several members, you know, several different houses right there, really close, that could be directly affected by that as far as their health goes. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Laura Carter.
Hey there, my name is Laura Carter. I live at twenty-three twenty Tucker Mill Road. I'm opposed to that cell phone tower being approved to be placed there. The homeowner, which is here as well, we've been acquainted and, you know, speaking of what's, you know, been going on. She's been receiving threatening letters from the actual company for something she didn't sign up for. She had no knowledge that this was going on when she purchased her home. It was made previous owner signed to that contract. And now she's receiving notifications and threatening letters and harassing if she is known to be appeared opposing the cell phone being added on there. So I think that's pretty unethical of, you know, the people that did that before, putting her in this predicament because she moved there to be peaceful with her grandchildren and enjoy a beautiful property, not some ugly metal thing in her yard. I'm actually her next door neighbor. My mother is also elderly and, you know, I feel for her health as well. And my next door neighbor, which she's about eighty years old, which lives directly beside us, she's affected as well and she already has health issues. And that's why my mom could not be here today due to that. And I also don't want to affect my value of my home. And it's just an eyesore. And like the young lady before stated, it's in the country. We, we just want the animals and agriculture and everything. We don't want the city coming to the country. But I oppose to it being placed there and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Do you all have cell phone service?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The next speaker is Odysse O. Weldon.
Good evening and thank you for your time and I concur with everything that's been said. Most importantly, we're all concerned about our health. I also have an eighty-six-year-old grandmother who's at my house, mother who's at my house, and grandchildren, and I'm directly across the street from where the tower is going to, well, they're trying to build the tower, we hope it's not going to be built, and the aesthetics of it also. And I have a question because the size says seventeen acres. I think the whole property is seventeen acres, which is the family that's owned part of that property where they're trying to build it. So I think it's about two acres possibly that the tower would be on. And we just don't want it in our community. Other members wanted to be here today but couldn't get home from work on time to get here. Our health is our main concern, our elderly members of our family and our grandchildren and the aesthetics of it. I'm sure there are plenty of towers in Rockdale already with cell phone service, mine work fine. And we just don't want it and we pray that you all would do the right thing about the neighbors and the community and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Loretta McIntosh.
Good evening, my name is Loretta McIntosh and I stay on Tucker Mill Road. And I just want to read.
You speak closer than the device.
I just want to read the disadvantage of having a tower. The disadvantage of having a cell tower near your house. People in the area experience sleep disorder, fatigue, headaches, memory loss, depression, hearing problems, joint pain, skin disease, and even cardiovascular problems. Those within a hundred meters were exposed to radiation at a hundred times normal level. In Israel, the study found risk of cancer quadruple among people living within three hundred and fifty meters of a cell phone transmitter. And seven out of eight cancer victims were women. We don't want this on Tucker Mill Road. Like I say, I agree with everybody that spoke. We have grandchildren, we have elderly people, and we just want to keep Tucker Mill Road, the country seen like it is. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Jeanette McFarland.
Good evening. I'm not going to repeat what everybody has said because I totally agree with them. What's on my heart right now is we sense that the board of commissioners, the planning department, you're not listening to us. Our neighborhoods have been absolutely destroyed with townhouses, single-family homes, apartments, greenery gone. Now a possibility of this tower. We moved to this area because of its beauty and its quietness. And right now it has been torn apart. The community is really disappointed with you all. With the approval of all the changing and the zoning, our homes aren't going to be sold with the amount that they could be sold for. We are congested in every way you can imagine. Streets have not been expanded. We got cars from everywhere. The community is disappointed with you all, I want you to know that. Very, very disappointed because it appears that you're not looking after what the homeowners that live here and have lived here for many years, you're not paying attention to that. It appears that the developers and everybody else sense that there's blood in the water, that they can come here and get anything pushed through. And I am asking you all to stop this. Listen to the people who live here, who pay the taxes, please. We don't want all of this. We don't want to be Atlanta. We absolutely don't. And we have cried out about this numerous times. And it's almost as though it goes on deaf ears. Our community is in shambles. Please take a ride on Miller's Chapel Road and see what has happened. Please. Then take a ride on, on Flat Shoals Road, see what has happened. Please. It's too late now for that, but please, just like they're saying, we like our country roads. We like where we live. We don't want rodeos in our backyard. We don't want all of that. So I pray that you all will consider what's been said here and ongoing. We like where we live. Let Atlanta be Atlanta and let Rockdale be Rockdale. Please, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, nobody else signed up, so we'll close the portion of the public hearing and...
Again, as again, there is some still outstanding issues again with the, with the applicant and the owner and previous owner as well. So again, the applicant is not here. So therefore, again, staff does recommend that should, the planning commission does recommend no recommendation for this applicant, I mean, for this application. So therefore, it can go to the board of commissioners. And then staff again will press on to the board of commissioners to resend this back to the planning commission. And therefore, we can actually have a true recommendation from the planning commission. However, again, it's in your purview to proceed as you prove, as you wish. So therefore, again, I will reiterate your choices, again, to approve, to approve at a lesser intent, to deny or no recommendation at all.
Chris, can I ask you one question? How long has this been in, developed, two years, three years? How long ago has the property been brought with intent to actually put the tower there? How long has this been?
Probably, I do not want to speculate. I know it has not been two years as far as my knowledge. Again, it's probably lesser than that. However, again, I do not want to speak, speak quite when I do not have all the facts because again, a lot of the outstanding issues again do not pertain to the actual application. So therefore, again, staff is, is strictly trying to, to allow the applicant to work out those outstanding issues so then the actual, the actual application can be actually heard. However, again, they have those outstanding issues, so again, we're trying to allow them to work that out. Again, however, at some point, again, the BOC will determine if they want to allow that to happen or make the appropriate action.
Staff would make the recommendation to...
Yeah, staff has did make a recommendation, but again, with, with the request at the yesterday last minute from the applicant, we felt that it's best to allow the no recommendation to move forward, to allow them again, the opportunity to, to find some resolution. However, again, if no resolution is, is, is found at that point in time, again, we'll, we'll, we'll let the BOC to make their determination.
Could you clarify, the applicant is representing who the current owner?
So again, not to get into some of the minutia of, again, stuff that's outside of our purview. Again, it is, as the previous person who spoke in opposition, there is a dispute regarding with the new owner regarding the location of this, of this tower. The applicant had some form agreement with the previous owner. Again, a lot of that, again, is something, again, even as a, as a layman person, I do not understand because there's a lot of lawyer, legal ease and so forth. So therefore, we're, we're asking them to hopefully work that out so to have some type of resolution.
Chris, I have a question. If we say we have no recommendation and return it to the BOC, do they have to send it back to the planning commission or do they approve it without our recommendation?
They have that option, but again, staff is really going to press upon them that this needs to come back to the planning commission. Because again, the applicant was not here to able to basically be able to defend itself as well as to give you all the information that you have, that you want, the question that you want to answer. So therefore, again, staff is going to really press upon them to send it back to, to the planning commission. Staff does not see an issue why this cannot come back to the planning commission to hear, to have your questions answered. Because again, we really want to actually have a, a, a full dialogue meeting so you can get your questions answered and so forth. And the applicant can respond back to the complaints from the community.
So the two public hearings required, this would count as one of the public hearings?
Technically, yes, it would count because again, we, we already had one.
The BOC meeting on the twenty-fourth would act as the second one.
Yes.
Yes. I want to point out something that I believe is a problem with this application. Section two eighteen dash twenty-two, application requirements and standards state, and this is under documents required, section D, scaled elevation showing the impact of the proposed telecommunications facility, which they have done, that's the first part. The second part, if the proposal is for a tower, which this is, the applicant shall also arrange a balloon test with Department of Public Services Engineering staff to be conducted at a date and time conducted by staff physically demonstrating the actual height and location of the proposed tower. On the documents required form, that balloon test is not checked and has not been done. But the applicant themselves, in their own handwriting, says TBP, I think to be presented, closer to hearing. So they are aware by their own handwriting that this is to be presented at the hearing, not after the hearing. The purpose of the balloon test is to show the location and what, how high the tower is so the adjacent property owners can actually see what they're going to see from their property. It would make no sense to approve this and then have the balloon test. So they don't have any say in matter or anything to come back and, and talk about that, what they see. So the applicant has not done the balloon test. And I'm going to recommend, as they said closer to the hearing, that they will present us with a balloon test.
I will, I will, I will talk to applicant about that. Yes, sir?
All right. Any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify, and the statement was made, they're saying that the tower's going to be on only actually two acres, but the, this applicant says, application says seventeen acres. So, but the tower, there's going to be existing homes on the same property, these seventeen acres?
There is an existing home on the property.
Yes, yes, ma'am, yeah, there is.
So homes will remain on the property?
The home will, yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay. Well, will they be able to continue to develop on these acres as zone outside of this two acres?
Not within, not within the fall radius of the, of the tower. Like most of the towers on there, they probably will not be able to develop on the rest of the, rest of the property.
But there is something that actually they, they put in there that says that there may be multiple structures that might be needed after that. That was one of the questions that...
Yeah, so those are the other facilities and so forth. So anytime you have a new tower, you have other equipment as well to, to, to monitor the actual tower itself.
So that may be outside of the two acres?
Well, possibly, again, I, I'm gonna hold off on being able to answer that question because they know more than I, than I do when it comes to that.
Well, most of the questions would be for them regarding like the generator, tanks, things like that.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
All right, are there any other questions? Or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we request that this permit case be returned to the BOC with no recommendation.
A second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Hopefully we'll see this at the next meeting. Hopefully we'll see this at the next meeting. We should. All right. Moving on to item R2. Text Amendment Case Number 2023 dash 03, An Ordinance to Amend the Text of 218 dash 1 Table Permitted Uses of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended adding beer, wine, and liquor stores...
Before they leave, could you recommend that they go to the Board of Commissioners meeting if they have any concern?
As amended adding beer, wine, and liquor stores to MXD Mixed Use Development Zoning District to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The applicant is the county staff.
Uh, yes, sir. So again, before you is, again, is just a, a use, uh, use change again to allow beer, liquor, and... I'm sorry, this is just a use change, I apologize, I should have got closer. Uh, again, it's just a, a, a use change, uh, to allow beer, liquor, and wine stores, uh, in the Mc- MXD, uh, category. It is currently allowed in C1 and C2. However, in the mixed-use district, it is not allowed. Uh, staff has got a receiving, I'm sorry, not got, receiving several requests, uh, to do, be able to have this option when possibly you're doing a mixed-use development, uh, in the county. Uh, because again, it, the constraints on it makes it very limited to market, to extra retailers. Uh, therefore, staff is taking a look at this and agree that it allows more consistent, uh, uh, consistent use pattern across the, uh, across the use table. Uh, so therefore, staff is recommending approval of this, uh, change.
Well, to this point, I mean, what type of services have been impacted by not having this?
It really is just proposed, um, services. So we've had several, uh, concept meetings or proposed meetings for, for people who are wanting to do mixed-use, uh, in certain districts. And a lot of them are interested in doing something of, of a beer store or a wine store. Uh, something similar to, uh, if you ever been down to, uh, to the Belt Line, uh, on the west end, uh, do you have a mixture of, of, of office, commercial, uh, um, beer, what was it, I'm sorry, beer, like a brewery, I'm sorry, not brewery, but a brewery, uh, wines, wine tasting and so forth, and as well as residential. So again, it's to allow that, uh, different mixtures used to kind of be more creative. So instead of just kind of a not true mixed use, but allow better options and better, uh, creativity and so forth.
Do you know of any pending applications?
No, no, sir, no, not...
Does this would affect?
No, no, sir, not, not at this time, no.
So this could just be a, a package store?
What, possibly it could be, but however, again, what we've seen, again, is because it's in mixed use, it is required three, two other, uh, uses as well. So it just strictly couldn't be a package store.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, it's again, the option of, you know, we want to do a wine store, but also we want to have office or we want to have residential and so forth. So again, it gives you that option of doing that.
Chris, is there any restrictions on the number of these type establishments? I mean, I know, you know, you meant in the text, but so if you put it in there, there's no restriction on, we could have ten and that'd be only type of business we have within that.
Are you, so are you just saying just, just straight liquor stores in the MXD?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my thought process.
No, no, ma'am, because again, it is mixed-use district. So you're required to do multiple uses, not just one use in that area. Because remember, this is the mixed-use district, so you, you're required to do multiple uses of that would normally wouldn't be allowed in, say, C1 or C2. Because you wouldn't be able to do residential in C1. You're just strictly doing commercial. This option, it gives allow more flexibility for people who are wanting to do something a little bit different.
Okay, so you may have one establishment there, but that doesn't mean you're going to have two or three of those.
No, no, ma'am, well, because we've already, because, uh, because, uh, alcohol is already, uh, uh, regulated by alcohol ordinance anyway. So again, so there is, that's already in play. Anytime when somebody wants to open a new business, there's already a, an ordinance already, uh, they have to adhere to.
Okay, all right. Thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions? Or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, uh, ordinance to amend text of section 218 dash 1 of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended adding beer, wine, and liquor stores to the MXD Mixed Use Development Zoning District to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes.
Motion to approve the text amendment?
A second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And unopposed, okay? Excuse me, moving on to item R3. Text Amendment Case Number 2023 dash 04. An ordinance to amend the text of 218 dash 1 Table Permitted Uses and 218 dash 13 Standards of Use and Development of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended adding mineral extraction, dimensional stone to the AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District, establishing supplemental regulations related to, therefore, thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The applicant is the county staff.
Uh, so this again is, uh, another, um, repeated request that we've seen from developers coming in. So we've already had mining as a, as a permitted use in the county, AKA Rockdale, so. Uh, I just want to go ahead and actually, uh, kind of give you the definition of, from the county ordinance, of what mining is. Uh, so, and then I will tell you the difference between what, um, dimensional stone mining is. So mining is the extraction of minerals, including solids such as coal and ores, liquids such as crude petroleum, gas such as natural gas. The term mining includes quaring, groundwater diversion, soil removal, milling, and such crushing, screening, washing, and flotation, and other preparation of customary done at the mine site as part of a mining activity. So again, it's already, we've already allowed mining in the county. What that, what this is, this is dimensional stone mining. And I'll give you a definition for this from a, uh, from a neighboring state. Dimensional stone is defined as rock that is removed from, from its original site to be used with minor alterations. Rough stone and rock that is broken, sawn, and/or grounded and polished, cut, or dressed for use of building and/or ornamental, uh, stone. So again, so dimensional stone mining is a lot more invasive as from mining compared to general mining, as you see rock quarries and so forth, blasting, grounding, and so forth. Dimensional stone mining is not that. Again, this is the precise, precise construction, um, precise, um, uh, extraction where they actually use water jets to go down into the ground and be able to pull up the actual stone that they're looking for. Particularly maybe a marble, granite, and so forth. Again, the idea for dimensional stone mine, again, is for statues, monuments, and so forth. Not for crush and run, not for any other ideas, but actually make an actual structure out of this. Um, again, we have provided a list of supplemental regulations that we think will cover the basis of, of this to make sure that there's low to even negative, uh, not even, uh, major impact to the surrounding areas, especially in the agricultural. Uh, staff is really keen on making sure that does not happen. Uh, again, I want to point out that the current, the, um, regulations that we have for mineral extractions for river and streams are not even stringent as what we are proposing to, uh, to the county, to the planning commission at this point in time. Uh, currently, we have on the books of eight conditions, uh, for, for mining inside streams and rivers, uh, while we're proposing to have at least fifteen. Uh, and we took a little bit from the existing ordinance and then we tried to add some extra things as well to make sure that, again, uh, this impact, uh, will, would not be felt any, anywhere, so. Almost like anywhere, but it's not, not have a major impact so far.
So what's the primary use, I'm sorry?
So the, so the primary use would be, so again, it'd be mining, and then you have subsections. You have mineral, my dimensional stone mining, then river mining, and then you have your regular rock quarry mining.
Those are already allowed?
So rock quarry mining and river stream mining are already allowed in ordinance.
And it wouldn't interfere with the water supply?
No, 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 see, we're actually, we're going away from that. Again, that, we have a stipulation to be further away from that, not to have any type of impact on any existing stream, streams, or floodplains, or anything like that.
And that's where you speak to those fifteen additional stipulations?
That's the, that's what we're currently proposing, that's in your package at, at this point in time, yes.
What are the requirements based on this ordinance regarding the watershed?
We're, we're not allowing it in the watershed, it's just strictly in agricultural.
In or near, or, I know it would not be allowed in.
Yeah.
But, uh, what are the stipulations for, uh, distance from?
Let me see, well, we, I apologize, we did not include that in particular in, uh, in watershed. Uh, for the simple fact that it's not allowed. Um, however, if you want to add and include a, a distance requirement from the watershed, is, that's, that's...
I would like to, whatever maximum you can use to, uh...
Well, it'll be up to your discretion as far as, you know, what the, what, how distant you want.
I think it's important that we add that to it.
Do you have any recommendation of number of feet?
Uh, yeah, about a thousand. No, I, I think, uh...
Outside the county?
Seventy-five, forty-eight feet.
Seventy-five, a hundred feet?
Seventy-five, a hundred.
Does this, did this come about because of, uh, any pending applications up on High Tower Trail?
What, so we had an application, but again, we do not accept applications anywhere. There's nothing that's to be allowed at this point in time. So we don't have any pending applications right now.
How, based upon this ordinance change, how might it affect that piece of property up there?
I do not know at this point in time. Because since, I just want to say, since we do not have applications, staff has, does not take and review any applications anyway where there's no pending, uh, there's not a pending use. Uh, so therefore, staff has to do the use first before we even accept any type of application in, so.
Look, Tom, I'm just asking, is, are you concerned that it's preserved, it should be preserved in some manner? Should it be stipulated within this guideline, this?
The, uh, there's a piece of property up on High Tower Trail, ironically next door to the, uh, uh, rodeo.
Okay.
That, uh, has been in controversy. That's, uh, there's been some rumors that they were going to put in some requests to, uh, start some mining, and that's, that's what brought up that question.
Is the same owners or?
No, no.
You said, you said which?
It's, uh, two, I think it's about two hundred acres just south of where the rodeo property is.
Well, how are we addressing, uh, from the mining activities as well as these minor alterations you're talking about? How are we addressing deforesta- deforestation, erosion? I mean, how are we addressing any of those things? We're talking about, uh, my understanding is the agricultural residential, um, is just for parks, recreation?
So if you look at condition number K, again, we're asking, but not limited to, to, that the mining extractions shall not exceed the standards set forth in any applicable law or regulation set by the Department of Natural Resources or, or the code. So again, we're, we're going to seek that they actually, that actually whomever actually decides to do this operation, that they get all state regulations, uh, from the Department of Natural Resources to adhere to, to, to their regulations.
So we do have things in place for erosion?
Yeah, yeah, so this, that's the reason why we have that in K is again, so again, if we do receive applications or, or anything moving forward, again, we're going to be asking for those type of regulations and information, uh, so that we can make sure that the impact to the natural area, uh, is minimized.
Just as a matter of explanation of this, um, this mining, uh, there's a lot of loss from it. It, I read, uh, article fifty-one percent of all the material extracted from the quarry, the mining operation turns into waste. And roughly forty-one percent of the material that arrives at the stone, dimension stone processing, turns into waste during the processing of operation. Therefore, the overall recovery rate of stone production process is approximately twenty-nine percent, signifying the significant volumes of resources lost, the large amount of waste generated. Now, I'm not sure what waste is going to be generated, you know, on the property. I understand they have to run off and, and whatever stones that can't be used. I understand there's protections of that in the, in the code, just wanted to point that out.
We also, in, uh, condition L and M as well, again, we have those, uh, request those plans and so forth to make sure, again, where we are well, uh, here, um, ahead of that and well, well aware, uh, aware of that as well. Again, it, even though this is planned development, we still will be reaching out to Stormwater Department as well to make sure they are aware of everything and so forth as too.
Is there, I guess I'm still trying to figure out, I know that we, um, you know, have different, um, uh, land uses. Why, why, why the agricultural residential?
Uh, because again, agriculture because of the nature of dimensional stone mining. Because again, there's no blasting, they use a powerful water jet when they just pretty much into the ground. Uh, again, so that is probably more, uh, more suitable for agricultural than it would be M1 or M2. Because M1 and M2, those are all heavy industrial or light industrial uses where this is not that case at all. This is something more of a, uh, more of a less intense type of use, uh, and so forth.
I want to, and, and on that note, uh, the AR district, it's the definition of AR district, just a section 202 dash 2 is intended to provide for areas of the county where single-family residential development can coexist compatibly with agricultural and agricultural-related uses. Um, I don't see how this, or any of the, we already have other things that are allowed there due to special use permit. But I think all these things are attacking the validity of the AR district with, you know, the commercial operations, industrial operations. And it's kind of defeating what the AR district was created for.
Well, and then, and again, our recommendation, again, is a special use permit as well. So again, these are a case by case, so not just straight out permitted. But again, like you say, again, agricultural, uh, is, the way it's written right now is pretty much kind of to, you know, one lane. However, as we all know, that agricultural uses can mean a little bit of plethora of things of, of, of different uses. So therefore, again, we see it as a less intensive use that would be, that needs, would, should not be fit in industrial area. However, we feel like, yeah, agricultural would be far, far better suited for this type of use. Uh, however, understand, we do understand that it is mining. So therefore, we think that it should goes in front of the board and to, for special approval to, to, uh, to take in consideration of all the other e- external factors and so forth. Uh, that's the reason, uh, staff's logic behind that.
R of A, AR, resident stands for residential, and I don't think residential and mining in any, any form are compatible.
Well, I mean, I could say the same thing about timber, timber product and so forth, I mean...
This ordinance is really only asked for two things, to add mineral extraction and dimensional stone, sub, sub regard. Is that basically all we're trying to do?
Yeah, yes, sir, yeah, I mean, essentially, we've already had mining. Again, mining is already established in our ordinance.
Where'd this come from? So what wants to start taking out dimensional stone on the piece of property?
We, again, as far as the Rockdale, uh, probably as being Rockdale County and so forth, again, a lot of people are interested in rocks and so forth.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Has there been some interest from, uh, the planning department?
I had one, one or two a couple of years ago, and just quite honestly, uh, our consultant, Mr. Tim Holtz, uh, he's had experience in this, and we just talked about it, and again, he thinks that it would be a, a good su- suited fit to, and we agree with him, uh, that possibly it's going to be a good, uh, a good option, a good use, uh, to be brought to the county.
But the issue is that, understanding this is a special use permit, okay, if we're, if we're having agricultural residential, uh, section, okay, one property is allowed to do mining, and, and another decides they want to use farming, agricultural, residential. Then you have, it seems like that's a conflict of interest. There's, you know, issues of erosion, um...
I mean, I can say something about a timber operation as well.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to have a timber operation, but I live next door to them, again. Again, it, it is, it is, I understand what you're saying, but again, the, the purpose, again, is we still think that it's still a, a valid use in this area. However, again, due, because it is mining, that's why we say a special use permit. Because again, with the right conditions, it could be allowed, because we're, we're, again, you have to say that it is a case by case situation, right? If somebody is trying to do agricultural, you know, use such as mining right next to somebody's door, you probably would be like, that might not be a good idea. However, if this is happening to be an area where it's far away from somebody who is in the residential area that could be around timber production and so forth, you're probably more suited to say yes. So again, the, the conditions that we're asking you, what we're asking is to allow for a consideration of, of a mining operation through a special use permit.
Did you see any special use permit in that?
Uh, if you look in the public ordinance, it says C, so C is conditional use. Again, that requires special use permit. Instead of P, instead of...
Is that from 218-13?
Uh, yes, sir, yeah. If you, if you look at Mr. Harrison. So, I don't, I'm sorry.
Why doesn't it say, uh, so you're talking about a special use permit, correct?
Yes, sir.
In the, well, what's it, in the text amendment we had before, special use permit case? Why isn't, just out of curiosity, why isn't this, it's a special use?
What are you asking, what are you?
Okay, this one, the, the one on the, was the one on the liquor a special use?
No, no, sir, no, it's not, no.
Okay, the cell tower one, okay. All right, I did want to mention one of the things that's vague unless you can define, on letter J, "Operations shall not adversely affect adjacent properties." That's great, but what does that mean?
We want to make sure there's not any negative impact on, on the next property. Again, we can probably spell that out more clearly on that.
You need to spell that because you can get, you get trouble legally because...
Yes, sir, we will, we were, we were, we, so is your recommendation to, uh, to have the planning, uh, to have staff explain that out more clearly?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Not more clearly, but clearly. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, grammar police.
I don't think we should encourage mining in an AR section. This just goes to, um, I'm not saying something.
Do you have any, like, case studies, like in other areas where they had, had this in?
So, we, so the information that we, that we real find, so we, there's some dimensional stone mining in California out west, as well as in Arkansas as well. Again, they, again, they have part of their, their standards and so forth. Again, subsection of mining and then different sets of mining as well.
So, the only difference between the mining and this particular dimensional stone is how they're extracted?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That is pretty much exactly what it is. It's just a difference in how the stone is extracted.
So, this wouldn't be any new businesses, probably already existing businesses that are doing?
Well, we, we hope there's no, no business that's operating this right now at this point in time without, without the protection that we're requesting. But like I said, if this, if the board chooses to approve it and the planning commissioner recommends approval, then yes, the new business may possibly pop up.
Do you see this as being positive?
Yes, ma'am. I do see it as being positive because again, Rockdale County. I mean, like I said, again, we do have existing patches of quarry and so forth. And again, if done correctly, I think this could be a boost to the county again, as we do have existing granite and rock and so forth, and so forth. However, I think it's an option worth, worth looking at and so forth.
I have experiences and I have seen where mining operations, various types, slab stone, where they do blasting, has, in, in some cases affected the water table to the point where it's changed somebody's well. And so, having, knowing the fact that AR is an agricultural residential, and somebody's well would be in the general proximity to this mineral operation, I don't think we need to encourage it.
Well, there is no blasting, just want to point that out. So, there is no blasting with this type of, type of operation. However, again, with certain things of that, as we, again, staff will take that in consideration along with all other staff as well. If there is existing well water and so forth, again, that's something that we would definitely make, make a note of and then find out exactly what operation, how it will affect the existing well water. Again, again, this will not be a use that again, is the administrative review by staff. Again, this will be questions you will be asked the applicant, whoever decides to apply for a special use permit, again, to get those type of questions and answers and so forth.
I think we, you know, might open ourselves up, even with no blasting, to affect the water table and open ourselves up to possible legal exposure.
Yes, yes. I'll duly note that, Mr. Harrison.
Chris, from a generalized standpoint, we have seen a lot of cases that have changed from agricultural residential to medium density, to high density in the past. So, it seems like we're just taking this particular district and we're, we're kind of removing it, whether it not be, you know, townhomes, residences now, it's blasting, mining. So, that's a concern.
Again, I want to say no blasting.
No blasting.
No blasting.
Water blasting.
No, but...
Could you clarify what, because water, the record of the stone of water, as an example, what they used to do in the area, they might not be blasting, but this is getting important to get the pressure.
Yes, 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 ma'am. So she's, so, so it, it all depends on scale of operation, what they're trying to do. Because again, equipment can vary in size. We can have small handhelds to larger equipment. Again, that would again, would be under the, what the applicant will probably bring to you. And again, it would be within your discretion to determine if that's something worthwhile or not. Again, like I said, it is, it varies from small scale, you know, production to big, big scale units and so forth. Again, that would be something that would be taken into consideration for that. To your question again, as to, as to that, not to kind of get off topic and so forth, again, growing county and so forth, a lot of agricultural, so those things are going to come up and those are going to change over time. That's just natural how, how that occurs.
What is environment, the, an I, an L, waste drill fluids generated on site shall be contained onsite securely fenced location and are transported from the site disposed of in environmentally safe and legal manner. What's an environmentally safe manner? Is that?
Not dumping it down the street?
What's that?
Not dumping it down the street. I would, I, I, I kid, but I, but I, I, I would, I would assume...
Is there a definition, is there, again, is there, could be a disagreement, what environmentally safe manner is?
Well, I mean, common sense would say environmentally safe would be something that would be not, not impacted. But I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
I, I don't know, you know, I don't know enough about if something like that can be defined, but anything that's vague.
Well, I think again, I think again, environment, when it says environmentally legal, it stands again, we are still, we're going to rely on the Department of Natural Resources. Again, again, that section, section K, again, all applicable law and regulations. So again, whatever they set forth, we want to make sure that they fall in line with that.
Do they, so they, I would be curious to find out, if you find out, do they have regulations on what's environmentally safe?
I'm, I'm pretty sure they, they do have something.
And then that kind of defines it.
Yep.
Waste drill fluids that would end up in the tailings of any mining operation that are disposed of, quite often end up in the commercial landfill, from my exposure in the past of this type of operation. And again, I, I find that, I find that objectionable because the protection of landfills is questionable in itself, I think.
Is there any way that we can limit the, the amount of activity that, that occurs? You know, I mean, if somebody has 20 acres, can they?
I mean, it's within your purview to ask conditions and so forth.
It has to be a minimum of 85 acres.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah. However, again, this is, again, these are, these are staff recommendations. Again, as, as within your, within your purview, you can make recommendations to add the recommendations as well.
Oh, last one here.
Just confirming, AR lot size at minimum is one acre wide?
I believe it is two acres, I believe. I believe it's two acres.
Okay.
It's two acres, yes. It's two acres.
So, you know, it may be with rounds, residential neighborhood, residential homes that are on two acre lots, and I may actually have 85 acres. And so, I'm, I can allow someone to come in on my 85 acres and establish this, and it's going to create vibrations, noise, discomfort?
Well, again, again, this would require a special use permit again. So again, you would go before them, they would come before you guys if you made that decision, to, if how, how, how that would happen. But again, we would have these, 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 these regulations here to make sure that that does not happen. That again, is to try to mitigate any of that happening. So again, I mean, that's something that we will be looking into.
Wouldn't all mining operations that were being requested have to have a special permit, even without this change to the ordinance?
So, the only existing, so the existing mining operations that require a special permit, let me double check really quick here.
Has that just...
So, yes, yes, sir. Yep. So, all, so all mining operations have to come before the board, from the board. So essentially, what we're doing again, is not changing pretty much anything, just adding another specific use.
Another level?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And again, we, we are nothing but recommending boards out.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions? Now in discussion, in our motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to be denied this text amendment change, case 2023, dash zero four, this community. How many questions, I think, and reasons for, for the change? If it's already got a, you know, special use permit requirement to do the stuff anyway, I don't think there needs, need to stir the bucket. So, I don't know if I need to rephrase my motion. I got a little over there. But I'll make a motion to be denied this ordinance change.
That's second.
Motion to deny, and second, any further discussion? All of you, first say aye?
Aye.
Okay, not opposed. All right.
Ms. Goober, I noticed your mouth didn't move. Is that a no?
I...
I didn't hear it. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Come, I think you should come back and, and...
Well, I mean, like I said, if you want, I just want to make sure.
Give your vote.
You didn't. Chris is exactly right. I'm like, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
All right, so...
Would you want it on your 85 acres?
Huh?
Would you want it on your 85 acres?
No, that's what I'm saying. I know. I live next to a quarry, and so I know the impact of a quarry. And that would be one of my concerns. That's why I said it's just, you think it doesn't, you hear vibrations all the, but you don't think you hear.
Hmm.
So, it is.
So, well, to clarify, so we have a motion and there's three to deny, and...
I think, I like Chris' idea. He's just trying to clarify the text amendment. But I, I think really additional, 15 may not be enough. I think, I think, I like your idea. I think you, you see, there may be a need. But, because he said it's 15 additional clarifiers or, you know, restrictions per se, and instead of the normal eight.
Well, again, this, this is a different use again. So again, we, we, we think, again, from looking at the, and this is, we, we, this is just kind of be clever kind after the vote anyway. So again...
Well, really, the voting hasn't...
Oh, we haven't? Oh, so, okay. Are we sure? I just wanted to be clear because...
We don't have earnest things.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Because I, I, I just think it should, you should go back and present it again.
Well, that's good. So, we say no, and he brings it back to his staff.
Yeah, and I think some of the things we brought up may can be addressed.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I mean, we're, we're still, we're, I mean, since it still hasn't moved forward to the BOC, we're going to still present it, and then we're going to, going to present the comments that, from the, from the planning commission that we think are important, that we need to address anyway.
But probably you should present it to us again?
Again, I will, I will inform them as well. Again, this is, hey, planning commission would like for this to come back again.
Okay, thank you.
But, like I said, just in case it does, staff is still going to proceed and get those clarifications and those questions and so forth, so they can be answered on the record. So there's a clear indication that there, there is.
I'd like to see, you know, more definition of what, what mining is in Rockdale and what might be going on now. I think you could be a little bit more informed about.
So, for clarification, I need to get what you're...
What I'm saying, I guess, I'm not saying totally no. I'm not saying no.
Ain't no halfway back.
Okay.
The reasoning halfway.
Um, you guys are opposed, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, all right, okay. Three in favor and, and one in favor.
But you are going to bring it back with more information.
Yeah, so again, we're going to, again, take the recommendation of denial to the BOC. Again, we'll, staff will take it back and do some, some work as far as make sure we clarify some certain points that the planning commission brought up. Again, we'll bring it, we'll present it to the BOC. Again, we'll allow them to make their decision of what they want to do as well. But however, again, we still want to be able to still, be able to answer the questions that you guys posed as ours, as well as be able to explain certain points that you brought up and so forth.
And I understand that mining is much more invasive and much more environmentally destructive and everything, but we can't do anything about that now. It's already there, okay? But I understand this is not as much, but that doesn't mean, in my opinion, we need to add to it.
Yes, sir. I mean, like I said, that is, again, that's why you guys sit on the planning commission. You're, we asked for your opinion on this, and again, you'll give it to us.
Right, of course.
Because you, you stigmatize the point, you know, we are in Rockdale, but Rockdale is not Rockdale anymore. Rockdale is residential, and it's not, it's not mining.
Again, I'll, I don't want to keep people long. Again, I'll explain some of my, the thought process and get some of that as well. Just to let you know, we, there is no reports from us as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, planning commission members, you know I can't come without saying anything, right? I know how much it pains you to hear me. We're not getting divorced. I apologize. City did have two items that we wanted to have on your agenda tonight, however, due to an advertising error, we all know how those go, that we pushed to August. It is two text amendments. One of them can be quite lengthy, and we also will have our update of the comp plan and where we're at with that. So, the city will have three items on the agenda for next month. I encourage you all that one of the items that will be on the agenda is a creation of a new zoning district. Please, take some time. If you have trouble sleeping tonight, read it, wake up, and have questions, email me, call me, and we'll get your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any comments?
Yep. We were going to add an item to our agenda that referred to having board comments.
So, in the future, can we make another?
I apologize. I know this is like the second time you told me about that. I apologize. We'll, we'll get it on the next.
I'm going to ask if there's any, that, your comment is about the comments.
Right, my comment was about the comments.
Okay, all right. Very good, okay. Nothing else? We need a vote to adjourn?
Just for, and I think, I want to say one thing for the comments section, and I think those who may need to hear this, they're not here. We are only a recommendation, planning. We don't make final decisions.
Right.
And just, you know, be mindful of that when, when speaking.
That's a good point to let people know at each meeting, to know that, because some people aren't clear. They think we make it. So, I think we should make a point that, or I'll make a point, at each meeting.
And I, and I, that's good, because I just don't think they, everybody's not clear as to our purpose as to why we're here.
Right, yeah. Good point. All right. The next meeting will be August 10th, same place, same time. And now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Want to stay here?
Yeah.
I wish men we go.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, what should we do, adjourn? Second, discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.